All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the September 22, 2025 meeting of the Plymouth School Committee. I'll call the committee in order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded by one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
All right, Ms. Jackson, if you could read our land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we are meeting on the unceded ancestral homeland of the indigenous people whose enduring presence we fondly recognize. We honor the Wampanoag people as the original stewards in the Herring pond of Wampanoag as the surviving indigenous tribe to these lands. In our commitment to lifelong learning, we acknowledge historical injustices to the native people of this land and vow to educate ourselves, our community, and our students on the first people and the hardship they endured. We offer this as a small but essential step towards building a cultural respect, truth, and accountability.
Thank you for that. All right, our first order of business is executive session for collective bargaining discussions, if I could have a motion for that.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining.
All right, Mr. Smardell seconds. Take a roll call vote, Mr. Smardell.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Yes.
Oh, you blended it in. All right. All right, we are in executive session at 6:31 PM.
Thank you.
All right, welcome everybody. Thank you for your patience while we wrap up an executive session. So first off, we have comments in the community members. Do we have anybody from the community wishing to speak? We have one. All right. If anyone wishes to speak, please come up and state your name and address and talk away.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Vaabini. I live in 180 Sandwich Street in Plymouth and I'm a member of the Plymouth Education Foundation. We just had a meeting a short time ago and I'm here this evening to present a check for $1,000 to the Go For Vote campaign on behalf of the foundation. So we wanted to get that to you this week. So we wanted to get that to you this week because we knew this was the week it was going on and make sure we'll get that to you. Thank you.
She walks away.
You gotta get that check.
Take a photo with the check.
Dr. Verbini? Thank you so much. For those who, you know, for those at home, Go and Go, please help support it. It's for childhood cancer research. We have been doing this for many years and that's very generous. Really appreciative, Kathy. Thank you so much. Kick it off today.
All right, thank you for that. That's wonderful. All right, next up, we have our student high school representatives. So we have our first, some first timers here from north, north from. From north, we'll have Emerson Snee and from Plymouth South, Charlie Walker. So if you want to go first, Ms. Snee?
Hi, my name is Emerson Snee. I'm a junior at Plymouth North. For open house, it will be held on Wednesday, September 22nd from six to eight. Parents and guardians are invited to attend, follow their student schedules, and meet their teachers. To find your student schedule, check the Aspen portal. Thursday, October 2nd is the Plymouth North Homecoming Game against Silver Lake. It will be, will be taking place at seven PM. Tickets are available on GoFan. The Homecoming Dance is Friday, October 3rd from six thirty PM to ten PM. Tickets are on sale now on GoFan. Ticket price is fifteen dollars from September fourteenth through the thirtieth. See Ms. Walcott in room three thirty-one with any questions. Picture day. Pictures will be taken through Legacy Studios on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth and Thursday, September twenty-fifth during ELA classes. Bus passes were distributed today to all students that were signed up for transportation. If your student didn't receive a bus pass but should have, please have them visit the main office. Late buses are available every Tuesday and Thursday and depart from the school at four oh five PM. This is a great opportunity to be a part of after-school clubs, sports, and activities. Plymouth North is Going Gold September twenty-second through the twenty-sixth for pediatric cancer. All donations are welcome. Don't forget to show your support and wear gold on September twenty-sixth. Student handbook and acceptance use policy. Students will receive a Google form to sign off the fact that they are aware of the student handbook. The link will be going directly to their student accounts during advisory or senior study. Midterm for term one is Friday, the twenty-sixth, which is this Friday. Kara Filler, Driven to Inspire Assembly. Kara Filler is, Kara Filler is North America's leading speaker on peer pressure, risk-taking, and traffic safety. All sophomores, juniors, and seniors will be attending this assembly on Wednesday, October first during extended K Block. We encourage all families to follow North on Facebook and utilize North's website for all happenings North.
Thank you. Any questions for our North rep? All right, Charlie?
I'm Charlie Walker. I'm a student at Plymouth South High School and I am a junior. I'm excited to share some tremendous news. Special Olympics has announced that Plymouth South High School, a school with Special Olympics Unified Champion School programming, is receiving national banner recognition for its efforts to provide inclusive sports and activities for students with and without intellectual disabilities. Plymouth South is receiving this distinguished status as a result of meeting ten national standards of excellence in the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. On Tuesday, September thirtieth, we will be having two school-wide assemblies. Kara Filler is a motivational speaker whom a number of our students representatives saw last year at a student council workshop. The focus of her talk with our students will be on positive decisions and choices. We have, we have a busy October ahead. October third is the Senior Oktoberfest, while October eighth is the annual CCTE dinner and advisory meetings. October sixteenth is the PSAT for juniors, College T-shirt Day, and the College Fair, which will be held at six PM at Plymouth South. October eighteenth is our Homecoming Dance, which will start at seven PM. Homecoming tickets will be on sale for ten dollars from Thursday, October ninth to Thursday, October sixteenth. Counselors have been visiting ELA classrooms to prevent post-secondary information. The presentation slides were also shared with families of seniors and are included in their Google classrooms. In the spring of two thousand twenty-five, Graphic Design and Visual Communication Seniors Leah Maynard and Logan Ryan won the Industry Award at the EdTV Film Festival for their short film, Unlocked Spaces. With this honor, they were accepted into the Boston Film Festival and their film played yesterday at the Massachusetts College of Art and Design. As has been shared, we are excited to announce that this year's Thanksgiving Day Football Game versus Plymouth North will be played at Fenway Park on Wednesday, November twenty-sixth at four PM. General admission tickets are available for purchase through the Red Sox. A number of our students have already signed up for a dentist's visit with Smile on November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. If you would like to sign your child up for appointment, please contact the school nurse with any questions. This past weekend, our students performed Ride the Cyclone, a musical, student-directed by Stella Jitsi and Jada Panino, and choreographed by Ashley Cobney. It was a tremendous student-directed event. College visits have started again through our guidance office, as well as academic labs during K Block. This is our Going Gold Week and we're excited to continue our support in the fight against pediatric cancel, cancer, sorry. Two events this weekend. First, our picture day is tomorrow for grades nine through eleventh, and we're excited to welcome families to Plymouth South for our open house on Thursday at six thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, Ms. Bryant?
First, great job. Welcome. Could you run back the update about the Thanksgiving game?
Absolutely. Our Thanksgiving Day Football Game versus Plymouth North will be played at Fenway Park on Wednesday, November twenty-sixth at four PM.
Thank you.
Should be a very cool event.
Very cool.
All right, do we have any other questions? All right, well, thank you both. This is your first time. I would say we've told everyone else you're welcome to stay here for as long as you have time for. You're, we always value your input. So, you know, you're kind of here representing your school. So, you know, if you always, anything you guys want to speak on or engage in, you are more than welcome to, you know, participate just as any of us do. So invitation's always open. All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item of business. We have a report from our Shishigahama delegation following their summer exchange trip this past summer. Is a topic that's near and dear to quite a few of us, is about half the committee has been on this trip at some time in the past. So, please.
Pull up some more chairs.
They're a little shy. Thanks for having us. We're just gonna give you guys a little overview of our exciting adventures. Kristen? So this is our group. This is White. Here's our Plymouth delegation. Becky Derocher, Jason Biers, Kathy Jackson, Aria, Kat, Linda White, Sammy, Charlotte, Cole, Gabby, Lucy, Jackson.
Leland and Mason.
That, we were leaving from Plymouth North that morning, first morning.
So we spent a lovely time in Shishigahama and this is their community center called the Kuximura. It's the center of their community. In one of their courtyards proudly displayed is the town seal for Plymouth. In our honor, a local man had created all of these bonsai. They were very gorgeous. Other parts of the Kuximura display a piece of Plymouth rock and a bell that was gifted to them on one of their visits, which I believe was in two thousand twenty-four. The people of the town are very invested in Plymouth and Plymouth history, and some of us even learned a few things about the Mayflower while we were over there. We hadn't known while we were in the meeting house.
These are the tsunami remains of one of the elementary schools. We learned during our time with our sister city that they're very resilient people. They suffered complete devastation with the tsunami on March eleventh, two thousand eleven. And these pictures are of a school where the staff and leaders moved all of the people there to the roof to save them from the rising waters. The pictures on the right are of the same classroom on the first floor of the school. This was the room the staff and students were originally supposed to wait in during an emergency. Thankfully, the quick thinking of the school administration and townspeople realized that was not a good plan and saved many that day. And we did arrive to a tsunami warning and everything was fine, but that's not what we wanted to hear when we got off the plane.
So many of us adults were able to visit Shiomi Elementary School. The school was not in session, unfortunately. The video I had put in is not going to play, but they do have a daycare very similar to our Y program that we have for the students. There's runs also, though, when the school is closed. And so we were able to do a nice round of high five with the kiddos when they came through. The schools were very similar, but they did remove all of their shoes when they came in and wore slippers. They had a swimming pool and taught swimming to the students. The largest contrasts we were talking about were like the lunch process. All the lunches were served in the classrooms by the teachers. Children were expected to then have a time of cleaning up, where they either swept the floors, did the dishes, things like that. And when they were on school break, they even went so much as cleaned the grounds, the swimming pool, repainted it to show service to their community. Being that I was the, I am the Assistant Director of Special Education, they were very eager to show me their special education classrooms, which were set up very similarly to ours. The largest difference between their self-contained classrooms is when the students went back to inclusion for history or math or wherever they were. They went independently. We, they didn't, many of our students are supported by staff when they return to their inclusion settings. These students went as part of, you know, just went on their own.
The adult delegation had the privilege of Fire Chief Foley being a member. This allowed us an, an in-person tour of the.
Tagahago.
Thank you. I didn't go there, so I don't know how to say it. Tagahago Fire Department. It was amazing to see how the equipment that is used in Japan for fire and rescue was the same equipment used by our fire department here.
Only things we could read were the names of the equipment because everything was written in English. The adult delegation, oh, next one, Kristen. Thank you. The adult delegation participated in an educational summit, two thousand twenty-five, hosted by Superintendent Otski and his wonderful teaching staff. The discussions focused around how we as educators and administrators can help students achieve their dreams. We reflected on moments in our own childhoods that have inspired us to dream and how we can help young people have those similar experiences.
While the adults were participating in that educational summit, all the students and their host families, siblings, host family siblings were participating in the Shishigahama International Association Exchange at the middle school. The students created origami, played cornhole, taught each other songs, and clapping games, and had an overall good time.
The Plymouth delegation and the host families participated in an activity called Darts Alive, directed by the Shishigahama Arrow Program. Their motto is aim straight, fly true. We had a great time playing a variety of different games with darts, and they have it as a class in their upper, upper schools.
Shishigahama takes their long-term relationships very seriously and they have great appreciation for the people of Plymouth. The display in the center of the Kuximura has a whole section dedicated to Andy Loretz, Kevin Canty. You can see Michelle Badger there and many others who have traveled there multiple times. So it was really cool to, they really honored them thoroughly.
The Sister City Party, or Farewell Party, has a tradition of gift-giving. Plymouth purchased dodgeballs for all of the elementary school classrooms in Shishigahama to use throughout the school year. We also had created and presented the mayor with customized Plymouth North and South High School baseball jerseys, representing Shishigahama in the year two thousand twenty-five for the anniversary, the thirty-fifth anniversary of the exchange.
Baseball's a big deal there.
So these were actually videos, which we can't play, but I wanted you to know that there was a special presentation at our final dinner where they honored Margie Burgess. It was beautiful. The mayor on the left presented Pompey with this dedication. And I'm, I'm not sure, there's a beautiful document and I'm not sure where it is, if it's at Town Hall, but it was great. And then I had the translation of it. And if anyone wants to hear it, I will share it with you.
Okay, we'll email it.
So the Sister City Party group photo has become a tradition. So these are Shishigahama officials, host families, Kuximura staff, townspeople, all of us from Plymouth, sharing food, gifts, stories, and making lasting memories. It was an experience none of us will ever forget. And we all left with a little piece of Shishigahama in our hearts. And some of us have already started planning for summer two thousand twenty-six when they will all come to visit.
And that's a lot of people and the kids behind us who are, some of them are going to speak, spoke in front of all of those people at that final dinner. It was, they were very impressive.
It meant so much to me to be picked for the Japan trip. I loved seeing the sights and seeing how many things were different. One thing I thought was weird was how they don't have trash cans around in public. Everyone keeps their trash and recycles it when they get home. I feel like, I feel like I lived a whole different life while I was in Japan and, and I had a great experience and miss the country and my host sisters so much. I wish I could go back for another visit. I am hoping, hoping my family will be able to host a student this summer. I hope it will be one of my host sisters.
Going on the trip to Shishigahama was a very eye-opening experience. Getting to go to the other side of the world and seeing what everyday life was like there is something I'll never forget. If I had the chance to go back, I would definitely take it.
So this is my host family. The culture, history, and scenery in Japan are amazing, but the relationships among the people in our towns are what make this trip so special. My favorite part of the week was simply spending time with my host family, and I'm so grateful that I was able to live with them. I got to watch their third and fifth graders do their summer homework for an hour each day, an hour each day in the summer. They never complained. Well, maybe a little bit, Taiyo, but. We watched baseball together, went to festivals, cooked together, asked each other endless questions, and I got to meet many of their friends. We continue to interact through apps and I know we will stay connected.
This is Sammy. Sammy couldn't make it this evening. She's playing volleyball today. Her words. Japan was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I'm so glad I took. It got me out of my comfort zone in so many good ways, like traveling without my family, being in a new culture, living with a different family, communicating with a different language, and eating new foods I never would have tried at home. The thing that made it the easiest was the way the people anywhere in Japan were willing to help and were kind, respectful, and welcoming. I would love to go back and see my host family again because the bond has grown every time I have been with them. First hearing all about the Suzuki family when my sister went two years ago, then when the Suzuki sisters came to Plymouth, when we got to host them and I got to meet them for the first time. Then this trip was just me with them and was the best time I ever had and would love to continue.
So I got to experience many new things in Japan. I was able to try new foods, learn more about the language, meet new people, and see the culture. I had a great time in Japan with an amazing host family and I was able to learn and see so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go. Thank you.
So we just wanted to make sure everyone here knew how grateful all of the students and all of the adults are and the ability to have gone and experienced the most amazing ten days that, you know, were this summer.
That's great. Thanks.
Awesome. Do we have any questions? Any questions from the team? Yeah, Ms. Shaw?
I just have a comment. I was on one of, I was one of the committee members that was able to interview the students and it's really nice to see it all come around in a circle and see what a great time you guys had. All of the students that we interviewed were very impressive and, and it's great that you guys had such an enriching time. And I really hope that we can continue this program into the future because it's really, really awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Give folks one minute to clear out. Next up, we have the introduction of our new Food Services Director, Mr. David Bedeau. So, if you want to come up and.
Yes, come on up.
Come on up.
Glad to have Mr. Bedeau. I've had much of your time. I'm David Bedeau. I just wanted to thank everybody for this wonderful opportunity to work with such a great community. I'm looking forward to bringing my experience, my passion, to our students. And the last thing I have to say is I promise our students will figure out the pizza situation. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll keep moving along here. Next up.
Yeah, just, Mr. Bedeau comes from Barnstable Public Schools, where he's been for the last 12 years, very successful director. We're really happy to have you.
Yeah.
No, I'm just giving a little bit about your profile.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You gotta run back to the kitchen. Will you leave?
One more time.
It's for the public.
I've been, I've been here for a week now, and I feel like I've been here for a little bit longer. I am a Plymouth resident. I grew up in this area, and I worked at Barnstable Public Schools for 12 years. And wonderful community down in Barnstable. Very, very fortunate that I'm here with Plymouth. Really, really looking forward to this, but I brought a lot of great ideas to Barnstable's that, that I am so looking forward to bringing to Plymouth. I've done programs like fresh fruit and vegetable programs, after-school snack programs. I opened up several summer feeding programs. I opened up a food pantry for the entire district that we served over about 250 students in the district. I, I always look for ways to improve the program, things, find ways to benefit our students. That's what we do every day. So, I'm looking forward to bringing my knowledge to Plymouth and making it happen here. So, thank you. I missed the opportunity.
Does anyone have questions? All right, now, you're good.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next up, we have Park Plymouth.
President.
We're really excited to have Mr. Egan and some others from Park Plymouth here. Dr. Blaisdell will talk about this because he's really been more involved in this, but just a wonderful collaboration for, geez, I think it's been over a year. But Adam, I'll let you sort of kick off where we've been, and then we'll.
Yeah, I can jump in too.
Sure. I, I think this is really a conversation that started between Chrissy Chase, the principal, and Park Plymouth. I think the two of you kind of really started it off.
Yep.
If you want to kind of jump off, because you, that's really where this all started.
Yeah, I have a seven-member board. I'm Desmond Egan. I'm the Director of Park Plymouth, Plymouth Growth and Development Corporation. So, I report to a seven-member board. One of those board members, Phil Chandler, students' attendant at Nathaniel Morton, and he kind of always thought, we've had a relationship with the school for some time related to the green area. We had installed a fence area there several years ago, and then we kind of used the parking area during off-hours for the school in summer to help alleviate some of the demand for parking and kind of make those large-scale events more manageable for the visitors coming into Plymouth. So, we thought this was maybe an opportunity to kind of continue that relationship and expand the parking. So, Phil and Chrissy kind of, Chrissy, excuse me, started talking, the conversation flowed, ended up making it to our board. Everyone was on board with the idea. We started exploring it a little bit further, along with Rich Bossy, who's a town engineer. And we kind of came up with this layout of, you know, potential additional parking spaces that could be placed in there that would help some of the demand during school hours for the teachers and staff that are there during school hours there. It also would be, you know, valuable to us for, continue the relationship that we've had for after-hours when school's not in session, weekends, holidays, and stuff like that, where we see some of our peak demand that doesn't kind of mingle with the school schedule and stuff like that. So, parking for us, one of our core things is trying to expand parking and add parking, which is kind of challenging in some of the smaller areas of the district. So, here's a big area that we kind of have been experiencing. We think it has a lot of opportunity to do that and kind of make it another available option for people coming into Plymouth there. So.
Can I add a bit? One of the other things, if you've ever been at Nathaniel Morton during arrival or dismissal, you know that it is extremely difficult to get around this neighborhood at all. In the morning, the buses go around the back of the building. Parents line up on Lincoln Street, and it's, it's a traffic nightmare. It's a place to avoid. In the afternoon, the buses load on Lincoln Street and then take a right or a left at the end of Lincoln Street, and parents line up waiting for their students in front. There's always been an issue back when Stevens Field was, was around. That's where we kind of staged buses, and they parked there. That's no longer an issue, that's no longer available to us. So, by doing something like this, it will probably get a lot of our bus traffic off of Lincoln Street into the parking lots. So, it benefits us during the day for traffic around the neighborhood. But also, if you've ever been to Nathaniel Morton, I never really noticed it until Desmond and the board brought this, and Phil brought this up, but the playground at Nathaniel Morton has always been split by a road. And so, the kids kind of, are kind of playing in the parking lot in a road. They block it off with, with a fence, but it, it's really not necessarily the greatest for our kids. Part of this program, and if you look out, if you've been by Nathaniel Morton recently, part of this program, and then I think Desmond will get to this in a minute, has been really looking at relocating the playground. So, it's a lot safer for the kids and updating the, the structure.
Yeah, so, right now, part of the, we're doing test pits. We're coordinating with Matt Durkey from the Plymouth Public Schools team there, and we're, we looked at, we did some engineering on the lower level to understand what's underneath and if, you know, viable for additional parking, stuff like that. You have to do some offsets related with rain management when you do that. So, there were some challenges down there with water depth, so we're at this step now with the help of Matt of the upper level getting test pits. And then what would happen is the test pits and design would be all one RFP, based on the positive results, hopefully, of the one phase up there. And if we all feel comfortable with going forward, the next step would be design-build to get an understanding of, you know, what it would take and costs related to making this change or proposed change here. So, that's where we're at there. But one of the steps that was needed here and that the board wanted to, you know, kind of show that they're, you know, that we're on board with this change and making this, hopefully, a viable option for everyone was, we, we are going to pay for the cost of relocating the playground from where it is now onto the grass area. Like Adam said, that's already taken place. I know some of the equipment is coming in here shortly. So, I actually talked with Matt yesterday, and we delivered a check in the amount of $200,537.04 to pay for that. So, it's in the school thing as a gift for us, as part of our grant program when we work there. So, that's why I'm here before, to kind of give you, shed a little light on the project itself, and then to show you the, I brought my check here to show you it's official and just kind of continue the collaboration with us and, you know, for next steps.
Just a kind of collaboration, I think, is, is definitely the key word here. This has been a great collaboration. Really appreciate the support of Park Plymouth, your support particularly through this process. If you look at that image, as has been pointed out, as Adam said, the, the playground has always been in a very sort of vulnerable spot, and by moving it to that rectangular area on the, on the end of the grassway, we're making it much safer for play. In addition, by the expansion of this parking lot with better lighting, more spots, we'll be able to stage our buses in the rear of the building eventually and then exit them from there, which again, much safer for the entire north Plymouth area around Nathaniel Morton. So, Park Plymouth is, this has always been a Park Plymouth site. I think this is a great improvement for the downtown as well, but it's just a great, a great need for Nathaniel Morton, and this is just a much appreciated partnership with Park Plymouth in this case.
I have a few questions. Others go first. Ms. Jackson?
I think this Brian had a question.
Just a few questions.
Sure. Just to reiterate or reconfirm, the parking lot would be available to the community off hours and would be available to staff, et cetera, during school hours, right?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And then I do, if I remember correctly, there used to be basketball hoops further in the, the parking lot. Are those being relocated as well or just the playground structures?
I think at this point, the playground structures, we'll have to kind of look at the basketball hoops at a point in time. We may put them back up, but it'll be in the parking lot, which it kind of already is, so we'll have to look at that.
Right. Okay. And then I see where utilizing the grassy area to move the playground. Is there still going to be an opportunity? There's a lot of land there, so it might, it might be known void. But right now, I know community groups utilize that space for practices and studies. Do we think that that's going to bump them in any way or interfere with their use?
I don't see that being an issue. We've actually had a, there was an event there, Nathaniel Morton Community Event there just last week, I believe, and there's plenty of room there for some of the flag football and whoever else may be utilizing that. But yes, that's why we strategically placed it where we did, knowing that there's so much acreage there. And there's also some land that's unused, sort of on the hill that could be adjusted as well, so adding even more space there, but it will not interfere.
One more, I promise. There's also some space where I believe they utilize for community gardening. That's going to be moved.
That's the particular space that I was referring to, removing that and relocating it to a better spot.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jackson?
My question's about the basketball hoop too, so.
We're on the same page.
We would eventually be looking to relocate, if, once the parking lot would be, you know, we'd be relocating that as well or be having conversations about that.
Okay.
And, and Mrs. Chase has been heavily involved in this and working with her school community as well. It's just sort of a mock-up of what that playground structure will look like, a significant improvement. Phase one would be to put the equipment. Phase two in the spring would be to do some of the accessibility surfacing. Can't do it at this time of year, so it, so it adheres properly, that will be done as well. So, this would be a very accessible playground structure as well.
Will we have more accessible structures at this playground than we did at the previous one?
Yes. This will be a much more accessible playground structure, absolutely.
And there's plans to mitigate what that looks like between phase one and phase two so that there aren't any kids left behind during this transition period, right? If we can't put the, the surface in until spring for phase two?
Yeah, I mean, this, this space will be, will be, won't be less accessible than the current space, is if that's what you're asking.
Got it. Thank you.
Absolutely. In fact, one of the things that we're doing across the district, I'm sorry, with, you may recall, the donation that Plymouth Ed Foundation received from the state, we will be looking to expand accessibility features at all of our elementary school playgrounds this year.
Yeah, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like a win-win situation. I just wanted to ask questions to make sure that everything was being thought out thoroughly, which I was sure it was, but it helps to be able to voice it for everybody else who's watching at home.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go on the left side. All right, just two questions. One, how many additional parking spots will this yield?
It's approximately 110. The drawing that's there is kind of just a temporary rendering done by the town engineer, like just kind of quick scope by just the square footage. It obviously will get more vetted and explored with the engineering project that I mentioned earlier.
Awesome. And I see the proposed playground area is about 6,000 square feet. Do we have a rough idea of how big the current space is? I know it's disjointed, but it looks similar visually. I didn't know if you guys, if there's a rough address of what we're going to and from.
Yeah, I, I believe this is larger, but I can't say that definitively, but in terms of the, maybe the layout is more, it may not be larger in terms of square area, but in terms of the amount of equipment that'll be available to students.
Yeah, by having it contiguous probably makes it.
Just the strategic placement of the playground structures.
That was all I had. Anybody else? I appreciate you guys collaborating with us. Yeah, definitely seems like a win-win.
Now, I look forward to continuing it, and hopefully, we get some good news with the test pits that will be here in the future, and appreciate working with Matt and the team from the schools.
Do we need a picture with the giant check?
Yeah, could we?
And we always appreciate.
Giant check night.
I actually have two board members here with me, Jane Kimball and Jim Emmett, who came here as well, part of our seven, two of our seven members there, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Gilmore.
That's cool.
We've done something, right, other town to, in the schools, we got to take official votes to like seed.
Yeah, I know.
Because there was something about the high laws, but we're not losing the schools right now. We're just in hands. It's still a school.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Desmond. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Special Education update by Dr. Rogers. Did you bring a big check by chance?
I didn't know that that was the protocol for the evening.
For the evening, yes.
I'm going to sit up here and I'm going to invite Becky.
So, you all just met Becky. She was on the Shishigahama trip, but she's also my special education sidekick, and we've worked together for the last 16 years, and I will say I absolutely just adore working with her, and we make an amazing team together. And this collaboration would not be possible without her help, which has been amazing. I also want to shout out to Suzanne Hines, who's been our new, new addition to our art of district, as our art of district coordinator and our special education department heads at the elementary and secondary level. They are just amazing people and work really, really hard to get our kids what they need and collaborate with parents and teachers, so. Kristin's just getting that set out. So, while she's doing that, I'm going to give a shout out to our CPAC behind us.
You can throw the camera around.
All right, so we went with the, we went with the fall foliage, back-to-school theme, and as we discussed last year, we have a bit of a new structure, which I think it's working out really well, but Becky would tell me if it wasn't. What I love about it is that it offers more collaboration between general education and special education. So, I've noticed just in the last couple of months, the special education staff using the resources from general ed much more easily and more frequently. So, in other words, I just saw Kelly Batinas, who's our math coordinator at PCIS, working with the MSNs. And so, when we were sort of siloed, it wasn't, it didn't happen as naturally, and now with my position sort of straddling both the gen ed and the special education, there's much more room for collaboration, which has been great. The other piece is additional special education support for the elementary. So, we were able to bring back the third elementary department head, which was greatly needed. Just with eight schools and two department heads, it just wasn't enough special education support for our teachers. And then there's more time spent proactively for case management and problem solving, so that's a big part of what Becky does. She meets with the department heads on a regular basis just to kind of problem solve and kind of get ahead of any, any sort of bubbling issues. So, again, I want to shout out to CPAC. So again, I want to shout out to CPAC. We've been meeting once monthly leadership, and that's been virtual, and then one-time monthly open meeting, so we have another meeting coming up. We did meet last, was that last month? It was August, I think, at the Manomet Library, and then we'll be meeting in the Mayflower Room for our next meeting. I think that's next week, is that right, Holly? Next week or the week after?
I think it's this Thursday.
Oh, is it this week? Oh, it's probably Thursday, probably tomorrow. Probably supposed to be someplace. And really, my goal, and I think our goal, and I think Holly and April really share this, share this goal, is to support open and honest communication, build relationships, and be proactive problem solvers. And they are really, really good about reaching out and putting things on my radar if I'm not aware, so that's been, I tell them that all the time that they hold me accountable, and I appreciate it, because it's a big district, there's a lot going on, and it's easy for things to kind of slip off my plate, but they're happy to kind of reach out and keep the lines of communication open, so I appreciate that. These are just special education trends from 2016. This was actually a really fun walk down memory lane for me, because I had presentations that I had done since I got here in 2013, and so it's, it's so interesting to look at the trends. We've always been about 3% above the state level, and we continue to be about 3% above the state level when it comes to special education. And these are disability categories, so these are the categories of disability that are recognized by the state, and you can kind of see some trends, trends there. This was a huge project that Becky and I spent a lot of time on last spring. It actually, it started in the fall, I believe, and maybe even the year prior, so a lot of work was done prior to me taking on this role. But, so TFM is the Tiered Focus Monitoring, it used to be called the CPR, and basically, the Department of Education, they come and live here for several weeks in our conference rooms, they visit classrooms, and they have a list of special education criteria that they go over. All of our corrective action has been approved, and it's been put into place, and so there is no further progress reports or visits required at this time. There is one outstanding, and this is from the Office of Civil Rights, is student discipline for long-term and short-term suspensions, and they will be out one more time in December, just to look at our records for that, and if you want to look at the report, there is a hyperlink to the TFM, and we'll get a final report once we finish, and that should be probably right around the start of the new year. One thing that constantly gets brought up is the programming across the district, and I think there might be, I, maybe like some, not necessarily miscommunication, but it can get very fuzzy of like, what programs do what. We're very fortunate in Plymouth to have as many substantially separate classrooms as we do, and to have amazing teachers that support our kiddos. So one, I did put together a slide, which is the next one, that kind of just goes over our continuum of services. This is a very broad overview. We have a lot of support in Plymouth. Again, I came from a much smaller district where, you know, we had to, we didn't have enough work necessarily for like a full-time APE teacher or a full-time assistive technology, so we were always like relying on collaboratives in other districts, so we're incredibly lucky to have our own staff. So thinking about least restrictive to most restrictive, we have general education classrooms with para-support, co-teaching, facilitating and push-in, we have a host of related services, OTPT speech, counseling, assistive technology, APE, we have several BCBA's across the district, counseling staff, I said, pull-out services. At the preschool, we changed, changed the model a little bit, so we were identifying kids as they were coming in at three. A lot of kids came in with an autism diagnosis, but we found out later that they actually didn't have autism, or maybe they came in at three and they were diagnosed with something else, we call it developmental delay, and down the road, we kind of realized it was autism, so we were moving, we were moving them to a different classroom. So the, the moral of that story is that the kids are so little when they get to us, 2.9, they're still babies, they're still in diapers, they're, you know, napping, so instead of sort of pigeonholing them very early in their educational career, we're sort of keeping it a little bit more open, and so there's still three substantially separate classrooms, but we're not labeling them as a disability category at that point in time. We have an intensive learning center, and that's K through 12. We have STRIVE, which I had to look this up, because I couldn't remember the acronym. It's Structured Teaching Reinforced in a Visual Environment, and that's also K to 12. And I put a little caveat, so one of the things that I've been talking with, with the CPAC, and also the two elementary school principals, Derek and Erica, where the STRIVE classrooms are, is that we, there might be a better way to sort of configure those classrooms. We haven't totally figured it out yet, and I'm not making any promises, but those conversations are happening continuously. We want to be able to provide the best programming for our kids. We have the staff and the space to do it, but I think there might be some shifts that we can make that help with staffing and efficiencies and space and things like that. Our care program is also K to 12. Our Bridge and Navigations Program is 6 to 12, so there was a change in our bridge program, so our bridge programs started actually when I started, and it was K to 12. And then we did a program evaluation through the Walker School, and basically what it came back to say is, you know, again, thinking about kids when they're little and developmentally, you know, they're kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and we're sort of like sealing their fate, so to speak, at a very, very early age, and not giving them the time to develop. So at that point in time, the bridge program changed from a K to five program at Nathaniel Morton to a three to five program at Nathaniel Morton. And then with some staffing, staffing changes, the kids are getting all of the same services, but we just took the label off, so it can be very stigmatizing to say, I'm part of a bridge program, or those kinds of things, so the kids are still getting pull-out and push-in, but we're just not labeling it in the same way. So the kids' IEPs are written the same way, they're followed the same way, but it gives the kids more opportunity for being connected to a homeroom, so to speak, and a co-taught classroom versus the other, it's sort of like reverse inclusion, where they were being pulled out and their homeroom was with the sub-separate classroom. We got some feedback from parents, like these kids have been together for three years, like now they're going to middle school together, and there was just maybe too much togetherness. So again, just giving them inclusive opportunities throughout their entire elementary school career. Our Possibilities Program is at South High School, and that's grades nine through 12, and then Project Growth is 18 to 22, and what's interesting about that program is that it kind of comes full circle, and it's very much like the preschool model in the sense of, if we have a student who, let's say, one of their transition goals is to ride the gatra, they may only come in Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons to just practice that one skill. So it's very individualized, it's not a Monday through Friday. We do have kids there Monday through Friday, but some of them are going down to Cape Cod Community College to take classes, some are just coming in, you know, to work with their teacher on, you know, maybe driving a car, or taking the driver's test, things like that. So it's very individualized, and kids are coming in at different, different times during the week. So what is new? So I didn't put this on the slide, because I kind of forgot about it, because August seems like a lifetime ago, but we had our first-ever special ed department head boot camp. We threatened them with exercise, and really, we just ate candy and Diet Coke all day, but it was a great opportunity to kind of regroup after somewhat of a chaotic spring, and do some team building, and then get everybody on the same page. So that was really great. It was one full day, end of August, and we had a really, an amazing day. We have a Wilson Reading Cohort that's starting, and also Orton-Gillingham, so reading has been a hot-ticket item for a while, for the last couple of years with the new literacy regulations, and this is one of those things where there's a lot of cross-back-and-forth between the early literacy and then the special education, who does what and when. So this has been great to have Lisa White working with the special education teachers and the Title I teachers on the reading piece. So it's being able to share resources across the district and having it not be like this is just a gen ed reading program or just a special ed. If it works for kids, it should work for everybody. Helping traumatized students learn, so we just had a workshop with the DA's office last Wednesday with our counseling staff. Youth Mental Health First Aid, that was through the grant that was in the spring. We trained over 120 teachers across the district, and we're hoping to roll that out again this winter, if the grant funds come through. We're doing inclusion workshops for all teachers in their first three years, and we have a great PAC course that's being offered by Laurie McCone that also focuses on inclusion and inclusion opportunities for students. And then West is, has a consultant coming in, Strategies for Student and Teacher's Emotional Success, and they are working with the staff over there, so that's an exciting professional development opportunity for them. And then I think our biggest partnership is the New England Center for Children at the Intensive Learning Center over at Federal Furnace, so we did a program evaluation last spring. We had gotten some parent feedback and felt like it was a good opportunity to put some resources into that program, so they started, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, so they have a full-time BCBA that comes in once a week to help work with the staff and the students over there, to help support that program, and Becky's really been following up with them. So special education staffing comes up pretty frequently, as far as open positions and things like that. So we currently have eight parapositions open in the district right now, school psychologists, so we were vacant four positions, right before the start of the school year. We have been able to fill those positions with two retirees and two contracted service providers, so we are getting that done, but it was very interesting to me that we had four openings. We literally had zero applicants, not even one. I thought, I thought school spring was broken, I applied for all of them, and everyone was like, are you leaving? I'm like, I'm not a school psychologist, but I needed to make sure it wasn't broken, because I just couldn't believe that. But that has actually opened the door for us to collaborate with some higher ed places like Tufts, Williams-James, Northeastern, and UMass, so hopefully, we're in the pipeline to get some students in the spring when they start to graduate, and hopefully, we'll be able to fill those positions with full-time people. The occupational therapist position at Nathaniel Morton was just filled, so we'll be onboarding her quickly, and we have increased by 1.5 BCBA's in the district, which has been incredibly helpful, and then we've also increased by three full-time parapositions with grant funding from the summer, so. These are my goal focus areas for the year, so supporting Becky, Suzanne, and Lisa in their new roles, which again, has been great. Improve communication with the CPAC and parents, especially at, during transition years. This is also a goal that Dr. Campbell and I sort of share. Equity of programming and staffing across the district, so again, that's sort of looking at the STRIVE programs between Indian Brook and South, thinking about ways that we can maybe help support that program a little bit more. Program updates and redesign to best support for the students in the least restrictive environment, so that's just something that we're constantly looking at and thinking about. What are the disability trends in the district? Who are the, who are the kiddos that are having the toughest time, and how do we support them? Closing the achievement gap of at-risk learners, and then supporting the preschool move, which Denise Tobin is doing a fabulous job helping with that, but I am here to support her in any way that I possibly can. And that's it. Sorry, I talked really fast, but I wanted to make sure that I was being mindful of Ms. Bryant's.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Request for brevity.
All right, questions?
Thank you for that report, it was, it was great. So for, for the kids in the post-secondary transition, do we have partnerships with any of the local businesses where, because it has to be in their IEP by the time they're 14, right?
Yep.
And is there a pathway for kids to get skills and to have businesses that we partner with that they can, you know, work on some of the, that placement?
Yeah, so one, and jump in whenever you'd like.
So our Project Growth students, 18 to 22, Ms. Belmonte has, we've been very lucky. She is our program guru. She's been with us for 25, 30 years. She has partnerships with at least 25 different placements throughout the town of Plymouth that our students work and/or volunteer at, get experience, and grow their skills through that setting.
I think that's very important, because I think there's, you know, the, it's, you know, tough as it is when you're going through an IEP process, but also when you're thinking of your child, you know, beyond school. And I talked to a lot of parents back in the district in Norwood, and that was one thing we tried to really work on, was that we had, you know, partnerships that gave a lot of choices to the kids, you know, so that's good. And if there's businesses that want to get involved, they know how to contact.
So Ms. Belmonte consistently, depending on the student's interests and desires, will seek out and find more settings that they could potentially volunteer or work at. We don't guarantee paid employment, but we do partnerships. We've been with BID for years and years. They go to Plymouth Puttucksit and do many different jobs there. There's the Humane Society, food shelters, and it ebbs and flows.
Yeah, well, that's good, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I think we're good. Thank you, that great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that Sedona? That is Sedona.
All right, next up, we have update on Food Services Department review and corrective measures taken by the district. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll turn it over to Dr. Blaisdell in a minute, but, you know, in light of the issues that we were, and happenings of last year within the Food Service Department, and we found a need to make some corrective actions, some of the things that Dr. Blaisdell will go through, we were actually looking to do this year anyways, but we brought in a third party to do, to help us do an assessment of our program, and Dr. Blaisdell will kind of walk through that, sort of what that evaluation entailed, and some of the corrective actions that we're taking.
So thank you very much. So we contracted with Clifton, Larson, and Allen. This is an auditing, auditing firm that many districts in the state already use, and actually, you're going to see most of our, a lot of our end-of-year reports now shifting to them rather than the auditing firm that we've used in the past, because they've been very timely and they did a really, they were very thorough with this, with this audit. So we, again, we brought them in. They met with Food Service Department, they kind of did surprise visits at the town, showed up in the finance office, procurement office, the treasury office, so they, they kind of saw the gamut, just more than just looking and interviewing the town, the school staff. So one of the, the things that, if you go to the third slide, if you want, one of the things that Food Service has operated with in the past is they kind of used, when, in their report, they used the word "siloed." They kind of were their own department. They handled payroll, they handled hiring, they handled access, they handled approvals, they handled asset controls, procurement, they kind of handled everything in the past. Last spring, actually Eric and I talked probably prior to that, but Eric was looking at really taking over the HR functions of, of hiring and making sure that the processes of HR go through the processes that we go through the whole entire district, so that was kind of already underway kind of when this whole thing fell apart. We had also started talking about taking over payroll as well, as we have one centralized payroll department here, that taking the payroll portion away from them so they could focus more on, on food services. Though payroll and HR gets into that, because they're still dealing with employees and hiring and so forth, but, but centralize that here at Central in our current offices as they current run for the rest of the district. That came up in, in the report as well, because we had talked to them, but we were kind of having those conversations as it was anyway to, to take over those. There were about, there were 13 areas that were identified as risks. Five of them were high-priority risks, six of them were medium-priority risks, and two of them were low-priority risks. Of the five high priorities, four of them were really related to payroll. And so when we went into this, the focus really was purchasing and asset control. Like that's kind of what we, we asked them to look at, but when they walked away, it really was something a little different. Those were still, still concerns, but payroll really seemed to be one of the major issues and controls in regards to payroll. One of the things that we, we started doing over the summer, we kind of did this, we started to do this before they really kind of, really went into deep depth, is really looking at assets. So we contracted with Fallout Destiny Manager, Resource Manager, which is a software program that we already have in the district, and we hired them to come out and do an inventory and audit of all of the equipment, anything $500 or more that the cafeteria owned, and all of the cafeterias. So they did that, so that was kind of in process as this was just getting started. So we were tracking every single piece of equipment, every oven, every refrigerator, every freezer, and documented it. So right now, I can pull up in Fallout Destiny Manager, Resource Manager, I can tell you what's in. what's in every single kitchen right now. I can tell you right now that we have about $1.8 million in, in equipment, and I couldn't tell you that probably about six months ago. So, I can tell you where it is and what, where it is. We can call it up at any point in time. When we get new equipment in, that will be registered into the, it will be barcoded and registered into the system. When equipment is picked up and it's no longer working, that will be removed from the system. So, David has been a great help already in regards to ordering new equipment that needed to be replaced. We've, we've had a couple of extra pieces of equipment that we've used and are starting to put that in, in some of the kitchens. So, David has been a great help before he even walked in the door. He, he got us through kind of the end of the, little to end of the summer, and then through September. So, he, he really kind of helped with that and working with state contract and purchasing a lot of that equipment and make sure the procurement is done correctly. One of the other things that, that came up was training and communication. We have a business operations manual that, that talks about procurement and all the processes that are in place. And really, one of the things that was identified is that Food Services didn't really know too much about that, that manual, even, but even though it was posted and so forth, but they, so, they didn't know too much about that. So, David and I are already starting conversations in regards to, again, we've talked about procurement, but he has a history of, of working through procurement and, and working through state contracts. So, he knows a lot of those, but we'll work more in regards to that. One of the things also is just that the processes are inconsistent across the district. So, what was being done in, in business wasn't necessarily being done in Food Service, but we're going to be working on making sure that that, what's done in both, what's done in one is done in the other. And then again, we, we now kind of reference the, the high priority areas. The first one that they noted, that they said was high priority one was, was a decentralized payroll management. Basically, but we were, we're already in the process of that. We've taken over payroll with the payroll department here. We've put some controls into place in regards to some, some processes that are, that are within the, the rest of the district. The next one really gets into high priority, gets number two, is payroll approval workflow. In the rest of the district, we've used Aspen for years. Cafeteria wasn't using Aspen. We're in the process of get, making sure that everybody is entering their attendance in Aspen, and that just becomes standard practice, which is the rest of the district has been 10, 15-plus years. So, they're going to be following that same process as well. One of the things that they had talked a little bit about is centralizing, centralizing approvals. We, within Aspen, there's already centralized approval methods already. When people now put in for extra pay because they've covered extra people's shifts, we've put actually a digitized workflow into that already. So, David has to either approve the time beforehand, which is the preference, or he has to approve before that necessarily gets paid off. And so, there's a signature that goes in to evolve with that, and then that workflow goes to myself or payroll. So, there's, there's a process that's being implemented, and that's actually really going into effect throughout the entire district. So, it's, it's not just Food Service. We're just making it standardized across the board. So, again, not to necessarily look at one department, but look at all. The next one is high priority three, and it's looking at roles and permissions. Really, again, this had to do with because we had Food Service Directors and Assistant Directors having access to enter some payroll and so forth. So, again, that, that access has been removed, and it's now been centralized in regards to payroll, and payroll is really the only ones that can make adjustments in payroll. And really, what their recommendation was restrict access to that based on roles, not individuals. So, it's really, again, when you look at the report, there is a little bit of confusion with working with them in regards to roles. Every department in the district has some access to payroll, but they can't necessarily make changes. So, when you look at it, they can't necessarily deduct money, add money. So, there was a confusion with, with the auditors in regards to some permissions. So, people can't do that. Payroll is really the only ones that can adjust people's paychecks and get some of, and enter people's salaries and so forth. But I think there was some confusion when, when they met. I think they thought that other departments could make changes to salaries or make changes to deductions, but those, those abilities were never there. But it was, that was always payroll. High priority four got into accurate time and attendant absence recording, and there was a lot of manual entry in regards to attendance. Again, that we're, we're removing in regards to making sure that everybody's using Aspen and we're using that workflow that we've created through the district for extra pay coverage if, if needed. And then, high priority number five gets into inventory tracking, both non-perishables and perishables. Like I said, we already talked a little bit about the equipment. David has some, is looking at different methods in regards to tracking perishables and food, different food items, looking at different, doing different deliveries to, to different schools rather than all centralized deliveries. But that's something that we're, we're going to be working on going forward, what that looks like. So, there's a couple of recommendations in regards to sharing inventory records, formalizing decommission documentation, which is really looking at the equipment piece. We have a process for the rest of the district. We're going to follow that process, Food Services too. They talk about software to track perishables. That, all of that, those type of things are going to be worked out in the future and how we look at that. One of them obviously looks at also looking at developing a budget and making sure it's a formalized process, and David and I have already talked about those type of things as well. The medium priority recommendations, here, there are six of them. One of them is looking at the chart of accounts. Right now, when Cafeteria was, was established, the Cafeteria Fund was established a long time ago. I don't know when. They kind of centralized all of the, the salaries in one account for the district, all of the food purchases in, in the district. Cafeteria does a lot of catering, so all those expenses that goes along with catering was kind of intertwined with the food expenses for the rest of the district, for the lunch and breakfast program. So, we're looking at literally breaking that apart and really spreading it. So, I could tell you, there was this much spent in salaries for, at South Elementary, this much spent at South High School. So, looking to divide those accounts. So, it's, it's a little bit, it's more trackable. And looking at separating food purchases for the school lunch, breakfast program to catering as well. So, looking at, at breaking that apart. Making sure that the policy and procedural manual is updated. Make sure that the procurement process is improved, that there are sign-offs that go on. Making sure that we're following state contracts, whether state contracts. Looking at retraining staff regularly, and they make a recommendation in regards to physical security upgrades, where the point-of-sale systems are. Those are something we haven't necessarily talked upon yet right now. There were some pretty good controls in regards to the point-of-sale system and backup. So, a lot of times, they do a blind close right now. So, the, the staff at the individual schools have to count the money and so forth, and they don't necessarily know what the register actually says. They don't know that until after they've made their deposit and set their deposit up, and then afterwards, they, it's matched up. Like, they get the records afterwards, after the deposit's made. So, it's a blind close. They don't know what's there at that point in time. So, those are just some medium priority recommendations that, that have come up. And then, some lower ones talk a little bit about document retention, making sure that documents are kept for the correct amount of time, and looking at bonding for employees. I've had a conversation with Lynn Barrett at the town, and she was checking with our insurance company in regards to, does the recommendation from the auditors, is that necessary? And if it is, we'll obviously make sure that we do that, but if it isn't, then we'll, we'll follow the recommendation of the insurance company as well. So, on the next couple of slides, there's a couple of conclusions and next steps. Like we said, we did, we conducted an independent audit. We'll be making, looking at strengthening financial oversight and controls, and we've made some progress in regards to some of those already. Looking at communication and transparency. One of the big things that came out in the interview process is training for staff and making sure that all staff is getting the training that they need. Talks a little bit about whistleblower protections. In the business manual, there is a whistleblower statement, but looking at how do we, we expand that a little bit, a little further. And like I said, enhance staff training and communication. So, like I said, David's been a huge help just walking before he even got here. Right now, he's learning, learning the staff, learning the routines and getting to all the buildings and making sure that, starting to make sure that compliance is in order to make sure that when Desi comes, because they are coming this year, they've already told us they're coming, to make sure that procedures are, are meeting their standards. With that, have you have any questions or?
Sure.
Going back to the inventory tracking of non-perishables and perishables. So, how, how does, how does ordering take place for a perishable food department if no formal tracking is taking place of those perishables? Like, what does the ordering process look like? Just because I, obviously, it must be different, coming from like a restaurant management perspective. When you're managing the back of the house, you're going back there every week, you're taking inventory. You're figuring out what you need for the next week coming up. You're ordering that from Cisco or wherever you're ordering it from, whatever food provider you are choosing, and, and you're ordering that food based on your use and, and what you have left. But was something like that taking place or, or not at all?
It was. It was. They were looking at menus. They were looking at menus and determining what they, they needed. There was a lot of food that was in the storerooms. If you took a walk around the, the storerooms this summer, there was still a lot of food that was in the storerooms. There was a lot of food that was still in the freezers. So, I think that there was extra that was there. Obviously, I've learned a lot about Food Service. I've learned a lot about, just talking to David this summer too, that if they run out of something, they can always, there was always something that, that made sure that the, they could call PCIS and get it delivered to, to heat up, whether it be chicken nuggets or whatever it might be. But if they were to run out, they had a lot of extra food that could be used if possible.
Okay. All right.
But they did look at menus and the, they ordered based upon what they knew the menu items were coming. And I think there were some items, I think, that, that sold better than others.
Right.
So, they, I think they would have excess.
Okay. So, so going forward, we're going to do a better job of, of ordering, I guess, economically?
I think so. I think David has some ideas, I think, in regards to how they, how we move forward in regards to ordering.
Yeah. I'm not going to put him on the spot right now, but I assume that in a few months, we'll get like a comprehensive presentation.
Update, yes. We will. We do. Food is not my background. I'm not even going to pretend to be my background.
Yeah. Well, it is mine, so we can always chat.
I don't want it to be my background, but I, I think there'll be some things put in place. And like I said, he's already looked at, how do we decentralize some delivery plays, deliveries and so forth, so it's going directly to the schools.
Yeah.
So, I think there'll be some, we'll do an update probably through, mid, straight through the year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant.
Oh, thanks. So, thank you for the update. You know, I'm very concerned just about the situation in general, as I expect all of us to be, and just putting it out there, all of these things that we're talking about is in reaction to something that's happening. So, just to confirm from my HR perspective, HR will be encapsulated in overall district HR. So, that will now be centralized HR payroll. However, from a food operations services, being able to look at how to decentralize some of it, as well as being able to course correct any opportunities where waste may be playing a part. I do think, just based on other settings that I'm in within the town, it's important that we define or we're able to share, maybe during updates or when we have a, a different plan. You've mentioned a number of times how town management is involved in having conversations from a town perspective, because I just, for, for the audience's perspective, I think there's a disconnect with them thinking things just fall within our purview, and it's very siloed versus that a lot of these discussions take place in both settings with other people. And I think it's important for the town as taxpayers to understand that it's a shared responsibility. So, if, if during the next time we talk about it or something, being able to define, like, what does that relationship look like? I think that would be important as well, just while we're talking about full, full transparency.
Thank you.
Did you want to go first?
Oh, yeah. You're welcome.
So, just a quick question about the food ordering piece of it. Are there controls in there now to like red flag things that might be out of order so that, or, you know, that might set off red flags if you saw them? Is there a way to like denote that in the system so David isn't having to look over every food menu to make sure that, you know, do you know, understand where I'm going with this?
You do. Yes. I think, I will say that we've looked at years' worth of invoices. We've looked at, I, I've gone back and probably looked at three to four years' worth of invoices.
I'm 100% certain of that.
Because I was concerned with some of the, the items that were reported to be purchased and so forth. Being a non-food person, I, I think you would have looked at many of the invoices and you would not have necessarily noticed a problem.
Right.
Because as a non-food person, I look at a hamburger as a hamburger as a hamburger, to be honest with you.
Right.
Or a hot dog as a hot dog. So, I wouldn't necessarily have seen an issue, to be honest with you. Other things that may have been reported to have been purchased were never found on an invoice.
Right.
And I, again, I, I went over them at least twice because I was saying, did I miss something? Were there, were there red flags in regards to some things that I, that I missed?
Yeah.
So, I, I think that'll be some conversations that we'll have going forward in regards to how do we do that and how do we make sure that we manage that?
I just know that's a much harder piece to look at because if it was money, it would stand right out, but ordering two more cases of hamburgers on a school of our magnitude wouldn't look out of place at all to anybody. I mean, I certainly wouldn't be able to pick that out.
No.
So, just as a curiosity, as a takeaway, I know it's an extremely difficult thing to do. I'm just wondering if it's something that is even possible.
Right. I don't know the answer to that personally, but I, that's something that we can kind of have some conversations about going forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Dr. Blaisdell was talking about, you know, distributing food right to the schools, not centralizing it, and kind of checking in on the, the inventory at the schools, what's available, how often are we finding the need to purchase, how many meals are we sending out? Having multiple people looking at those orders, not Dr. Blaisdell because he doesn't know the difference, right? But you're not going to know unless you, you know, have a, sort of a, a relationship with certain vendors and you're looking for certain things, you're not going to know any difference. So, but putting things in place so that the right people are looking at not only what's being purchased, but how much is being purchased, where it's being distributed, checking in on the inventory, that sort of thing, in addition to all the things that Dr. Blaisdell has already done this past summer in terms of, you know, asset tagging all of the, the equipment and, and having a process there for when things are brought in and when they leave, just like we do across the district. So.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryan, Dulce?
Yeah. I just, my one request is that we tighten up the timeline as far as when we implement the software. We have, you know, a need to track perishables and assets. I do believe that, you know, yeah, you, you're not going to prevent every aspect of waste and abuse and anything you try to mitigate, but with the assistance of, you know, knowing what our inventory is through implementing software, we'll have a, a better chance. And I think we have to tighten up, you know, when that's going to be in place because I think that's, you know, I've worked with CLA many times and I love it. I laugh because their medium priority about whistleblowing, I think that's a high priority. I think there's, there's things that happen beyond I think there's, there's things that happen beyond software, that if, if folks feel that there's no retaliatory aspect, that they might have come out and said something earlier. So I think that's a high priority too, to really let people know that, hey, if you see something and say something, it's okay. But the software has to have a, maybe we can get an update of like just a checklist. I know you said it's in progress or it's in place, it's in place. But maybe that's our next update that, hey, we, we looked at a, a solution. And I'm sure Dave's gonna have some suggestions on what software we use. But this is when we're gonna have it in place and from this jumping off point, we're tracking it this way. And then we'll know, we can zero sum base, hey, at least we got this data now. And it's almost like it's a starting point of really being in position to understand our, our department that much better. And it helps you guys with the oversight. You can say, oh, we implemented the software on this day. And from this point on, here's, here's the view we got. Because everyone has it now, you know? So I think that would be helpful, just to have that tightened up a little bit as to when we're gonna implement it. Thank you for this report.
Absolutely agree with that. And the whistleblower policy is important. It's something that we've talked about, not just having it in the, in the manual, but actually having a policy in place. Because it goes beyond what we're talking about today. This is about having people, and we had people who came forward, which was very helpful in this. And, and so getting people to understand that you're not gonna be, just not be fearful if you come forward, if you have something of, of concern. And I think to your point, Mr. Smart Jendelis, that's something that we need to, to focus on.
Thanks. I say one.
My question was around the whistleblower policy. So I guess, just to piggyback on it, what do you, what do you envision? Like just in terms of that policy? Is that something that's going to be district wide? And, and have we, aside from, I guess retaliation, have we identified any other barriers? To, to why this perhaps wasn't, you know, mentioned much earlier?
With, where, why whistleblower policy wasn't mentioned earlier?
Why, why, aside from retaliation, like have we identified anything else? Like has there been any identification as to why this was not like mentioned?
In this particular situation, I think it's because of positional power. And we're very appreciative, as I said in my letter, we're very appreciative of those who came forward. Because it can be, it can put people in a very vulnerable spot. So by doing so, and, and but having a policy that lets people know that, you know, we live, we live by a code of ethics as a, as a, as a community, school community and professional standards. And if you feel that, if you feel uncomfortable, you need to feel comfortable coming forward with information, regardless of where that information's coming, you know, pertains to.
And will that like, is that just going to be communicated through a policy book? Or is that something that will be like an onboarding process as well? Like you just need to go out and?
I think it would be important to communicate that policy to the district a large ones, a policy was adopted. I think it would be important to have that be a part of sort of the onboarding for staff as well. Part of the, this, the faculty handbook, I know that's something that we're looking at as well. That might be one that would be, because we do have certain policies that are prioritized in the faculty handbook. That may be one that we would want to prioritize there as well.
Ms. Shaw?
Just, just one last thing and, and hopefully maybe in a, a few months, maybe I can, I don't know, meet with you, David, and, and just look at what the processes look like for a municipal food services department as opposed to like a, a for-profit like restaurant department. But what I would like to see some of, and I don't know if this applies, obviously, school lunches are not a for-profit business. But is the usage, the waste, the what's going on, where? Because those are the places where regardless of, of whether or not you understand what's being ordered, the numbers don't lie. So it, while there is some give and take, depending on a year, how many students are out? How many students brought lunch? How many, you know, X, Y, Z factors are going into it? You know, two ounces of turkey goes into one lunch type of thing where, well, why are we ordering 20 ounces of turkey? Type of thing. But that's where you're gonna find those little discrepancies. And so seeing something about waste going forward, whether or not, whether it's, you know, obviously we have to prepare lunch for every student to eat in the building, period. So like, I'm not saying like, let's just do 50 lunches and see if they go. But like, you know, seeing how much we're wasting on which days and which lunches are, are more attended, I guess. But those kind of numbers are really helpful in identifying when you're over-ordering for a specific reason or for any other reason. But I think that those, just making sure that we have some type of system that can track that and just put it into a, a metric, I think would be good. I know it does exist on the private level. I don't know if it exists on a municipal level. So obviously the two systems are very different, but hopefully there is some overlap in that. And obviously I don't wanna, you know, keep throwing questions at a person that just started a week ago. So I give it time to settle in and stuff. But I would definitely be very interested in learning more about how it works on the municipal side of, of things.
Thank you. Are you good? All right, great update. Lot going on, but appreciate it. All right, next up, I think this is you as, well, Dr. Blaisdell, Capital Projects for FY27?
It is. So FY Capital, FY27 capital requests are due to the town. So when, when we create, we have to create a 10-year capital plan. And then we have to look at each year individually. The 10-year capital plan is, is, there's some hopes there. But it was really based upon the report that was done back in 2021 by looking at all of our facilities. When it looks at all of our facilities, it, it identified the, the key areas that need to be addressed. However, like our own houses and where we live, things come up. And things that are in this plan don't always necessarily drive what we have to do year after year after year. So this year, Matt and I had met with, met together and, and kind of worked through this plan in regards to some of the, the items that, that are needed this particular year. So here are the top 19, which totals just about $9.8 million. And obviously I don't necessarily know if we'll get that much of money, but this is the, the top priorities at this point in time. Number one is really looking, it, it, really the, the general theme, you'll notice a lot of times the past years, a couple of years has been HVAC. HVAC is extremely expensive. It's, it's aging out. The newer HVAC even still needs some work because it's very computerized and very technical and so forth. So Matt was here, he'd do a much better job at explaining HVAC, but I'm learning that as well. But the first one is really looking at the chiller at South, South Middle School. That's the big huge box in the back of Plymouth South Middle School. It's really susceptible. It's 26 years old or so right now. But also you gotta really look at, it's high up, it's susceptible to the salt air. You don't think it is, but it, it really is. So that's really deteriorating. If you were to look at it, you would see it, it's falling apart. It's, they've put some Band-Aids on it to try and keep it together and keep it running. But it, it's gonna be needed to be replaced probably yesterday. Like you really, they're really trying to keep it together. Number two is really again, looking at that HVAC repair. There's that big long list of items that we showed you last year. $500,000 barely puts a dent in it. So it's rather than looking at these large projects, really looking at $500,000 a year and, or $525,000 a year. And really kind of keeping that going to allow us to kind of address different HVAC needs as they come up. Because again, priorities change. Something that we think is a priority now could be completely, that could be a higher priority tomorrow. And if we set it to one particular school, we're locked into that school. So number three is looking at South Middle School and the roof restoration. This is a restoration. I know that looks really, really low, but it's a restoration, not a complete, it still gives us a 30-year warranty. They're not doing a complete tear off or anything like that. They're doing that liquid layover that he was talking about and it gives us a 30-year. If we were looking at a complete rest, a complete roof, we're talking a heck of a lot more money. Probably four or five times that a number. District-wide, looking at building envelope, looking at our bricks. South Middle School is, is one that really needs some too. If you look at the side of South Middle School, look at the side of this building, some of the brick buildings, you'll see the mortar coming out of it. So really looking at reprint, repointing bricks. But again, leaving it district-wide so we can address the biggest needs. And this would probably be a standing issue going, standing item going forward as well. Man and Matt, looking at flooring, looking at replacing a school bus, a 7D van. Looking at Nathaniel Morton chairlift elevator. This is a feasibility and design. How do we make that, that school a little bit more ADA, more ADA accessible? So this is looking at a design and looking at what plan works there the best. Some people would say just put an elevator on the outside. Again, we're in the salt air. There's an elevator, there's a lift somewhere around downtown. And they say, one of the companies that does that, they're out there somewhere between four and six times a year working on it because of the salt air. So we're looking at what's the best option there. District-wide, number nine, looking at HVAC controls. A lot of our controls, the items that control our HVAC are proprietary. So you have like Trane or Dakin. They're very specific to a company. So when it's installed in a building, you're, you're locked into using that manufacturer, that company for a long time. So it's looking at, looking at HVAC controls that are open protocol. So we could have any, we can really look at getting the best price for any, any repair service out there. So it's not necessarily locked into one particular company. Number 10, 11, 12 is looking at athletic services. The tennis, tennis courts, not volleyball, it's more, it's tennis courts. 13, looking at roofing for the rest of the roof that was done. That was only a small portion that was done this past year. Looking at, number 14 is parking. Number 15 is replacing a box truck. South Elementary, number 16 is looking at parking lots. 17 is looking at some district-wide equipment, tractors that, that is, that are deteriorating. Indian Brook, if you go to Indian Brook, there's a, there's a lot of places to run. So it's really looking at paving to make sure it's ADA accessible, but also fencing in some areas. So kids don't just, just go off into the woods and so forth. So and then the last one is number 19 is really looking at ADA. This came up a couple of years ago, is looking at ADA compliance. Because we're gonna, with some of the projects that need to be done at South Elementary over the next couple of years, we're probably gonna be looking at that 30% number and having to update the school to ADA compliance anyway. So trying to get ahead of it and looking at ADA for that particular building. West Indian Brook and Federal Furnace are really in the same boat, to be honest with you. But there aren't any major projects planned there at this point in time. Not that it's not important, but we're gonna be hitting some numbers if we start doing South Ele, work at South Elementary and we're gonna be hitting those numbers fast. So those are the, the, the top 19 at this point in time that would be presented to, to the town. And I think this is an action item if, if any questions.
Yes, it is. Do you have any questions? No, Ms. Shaw?
Just 10, 11, 12 are all for the same thing. But 10 is $550,000 and the other two are $33,000. Is it just more courts?
It's bigger, yes. But it's also looking at PCIS needs. If you ever go over there, it's a disaster. I mean, it, it needs to be, they need to take it out and then redo it.
So it's a level of work that needs to be done as well?
And this fencing, if you look at the fencing, the fencing is destroyed. South, South and North High is really just ceiling and overcoating.
Yeah, I think this speaks to the importance of routine maintenance, right? So we don't get, find ourselves in a spot where we have to spend as much money.
So that, that was the one that jumped out at me as well. I would recommend we update the description because obviously one's like, sounds like full, you know, replacement versus maintenance. Because yeah, like if, yeah, it, it sticks out like a sore thumb.
More project detail.
Yeah, making it clear, yeah, I mean, like I said, obviously you can't write a book here, but making it clear why. Because it's when it's, you know, 20 times difference in cost and they have the same description.
And number 11 and 12, the only difference is right at the very end where it says seal and stripe.
But that makes it look like they're getting more work, you know what I mean?
You should seal and stripe the other one too.
Number 10, I will, in the detail, there's a lot more description.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The overall, yeah, we can add, we can.
Yeah, put replacement or something in there. All right, Ms. Bryant?
To the earlier comment in regards to it being prioritized as a district-wide project versus an individual project, specific to the ADA compliance requirements and listing additional schools that aren't necessarily prioritized on this. Would it make sense to categorize a district-wide project? And within that district-wide project, categorizing the individual schools based on their needs? So having a priority of, let's say, eight for a district-wide project, but within those projects, having individual building considerations? Because I just, when I'm looking at all of these things, they're wonderful. But I just, I, I feel we're leaving something that's very important and from a compliance standpoint, a little behind.
So one of the reasons we've, and we've done ADA upgrades in previous years. The one reason we're putting that number 19 on is because when, by law, if you're looking at the assessed value of the property, once you receive, once you hit 33% of the assessed value within a three-year period, you need to bring the entire property up to ADA. And we're very, very close with South Elementary. So that's why we're prioritizing that for the full ADA. We did do an ADA assessment of all those schools, so we know the work that needs to be done. But I, I see what you're saying regarding additional ADA work. There are just so many priorities that we're finding, trying to stick with the, with the exception of the, the athletic services, trying to stick to the sort of the building envelope as much as possible. So we don't find ourselves in a situation like we did at Nathaniel Morton with the emergency procurement and the roof and the leaking and that. So it's hard, we could, we could add 20 projects to this list.
The only reason I'm thinking of it is also the point Adam made in regards to, from a funding perspective, being so specific versus being able that based on the needs that may come up through, you know, this, this scope, this is through 27, that you'd be able to re-categorize a bit easier versus being siloed to these specific projects at these specific schools being prioritized. I don't know, I just think we're, we're missing something by just necessarily elevating to knowing that there's other ones coming that could fall within this scope. Just an opinion.
I'm glad you put this out in the totals because, you know, a timely cost is a cost, but an emergency cost is always higher. And districts that, that don't invest and push for their capital requests end up paying a higher percentage year over year. Because there's nothing on here that, I can tell the research was done and it's needed. But there are some things on here. We waited seven or eight years for an HVAC system and it went up by $2 million. And then, then they decided they had to build a whole new middle school in the district I worked in. So there's things here that we really have to impress upon folks. And this isn't public service announcement for town meeting members. But, you know, you either pay now or you pay probably double later. And I think, you know, putting this out there is important, but also, you know, a projection of if you don't do your roof restoration and now you need emergency repairs because your roof is leaking, that might cost more, right? So that's an important approach to have.
To add to that, when you look at South Middle School, this roof restoration is a very specific product and a very, and right now, South Middle School qualifies. If we wait two years or three years, it might not qualify.
Right, that's important.
Because, and then we're looking at a full roof, like full tear off and full roof. So all of these roofs that are coming forward, these roof restoration projects, they've been, they've been cored. The roofers have come out and, and done a core sample. They've looked at how, and they've also done heat sensors, heat, where they flew the, the drone and so forth to figure out the moisture content in the roof. And they both at this point in time have passed for South Middle School. So if we don't do it now and we wait three years, we might not be able to do this.
Well, it's not responsible. I think taxpayers appreciate the forward thinking of addressing issues and not waiting. I think so that's important. And also, you know, staff, students and citizens, morale's affected. And also, you know, staff, students and citizens, morale's effective when you don't fix things, to be honest. Your building envelope, you have to do that inspection because we want just random bricks falling down. Like, so I'm very appreciative of this, so thanks.
So for both roof projects, you're saying you'd be targeting summer 2027?
Probably.
Probably too soon to do that.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we'd get the.
By the time you get the approval, you'd never RFP it and get somebody, as we've learned from recent school roof projects.
And we will bid those separately.
Yeah.
We want you guys up on the roof tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, so given this is an action item, do we have a motion? Ms. Shaw?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the capital projects for FY '27 as presented.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Smart, all seconds, all right. Go online, oh, I got logged out, hold on a sec. All right, we have six in favor, one opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you, Dr. Blaisdell. All right, next up, we have superintendent's update.
Thank you very much. I promise to try to move along. I do, I have a lot to share, but I'll try to be as succinct as possible. So a couple of important things to update you on, which you will hear at future meetings from secondary. The first being update on competency determination. You may remember last year, last November, when the voters approved ballot question that removed MCAS as the sole requirement for competency determination, which was one of the conditions for high school graduation. Following that change, the Board of Education in May amended the regulations. So there are key requirements that we must address this year by the end of the calendar year. First, each district must develop a competency determination policy that outlines how students meet graduation requirements under the new framework. And that must be approved by December 31st by school committee, publicly posted and submitted to DESI. The CD requirement, as I referred to, the competency determination emphasizes a couple of things. Mastery demonstration and coursework completion. So we have to, we have to identify that those two criteria in our policy. The coursework completion would include things that we talked about last year. Two years of high school English, Algebra I, geometry. Sometimes middle school courses are eligible if they've taken algebra at the middle school. You're biophysics, chemistry or tech engineering. And then, beginning with the class of 27, one year of US history will be part of that competency determination. The coursework completion for competency. So again, we have to develop this policy. There has to be requirements and supports for students with disabilities and English learners. We have to consider late enrollment students and limit the use of MCAS results when courses, records cannot be verified. And it has to be an appeal process. So all this work has been taking place with administration and we will be bringing this forward. Believe the draft will come before school committee in November 17th to give us some time if there's any revisions or recommendations from the committee there. So just wanted to put that on your radar. Another thing, which is sort of more immediate, is an update from DESI regarding career and technical education. So the Board of Education has adopted new regulations for CTE emissions, beginning with this, beginning this school year. So with our eighth graders. So the key changes include a lottery-based emissions. Moving forward, all applicants will enter into a lottery and the students can receive additional entries if they meet certain attendance and disciplinary criteria. There needs to be a standardized application timeline across Commonwealth. Deadlines between January 1st and March 1st. Middle school role, well, we've always had a very active middle school role in ours. This is something that's not standard across the Commonwealth. So you'll see, they will be developing a middle school pathway exploration policy, which will be part of the presentation to school committee as well. So our district will be sending a letter to middle school families outlining these changes in the coming days. In addition, we'll be drafting language for a middle school pathway exploration policy. And we will be bringing forward to school committee a review at the October 6th meeting for some discussion there, because this has to be done by November 1st. Very short timeline provided by the department. Mentioned tonight and both by our student representatives, but also Dr. Babini, Going Gold Week. We're excited to announce that this week is our Go Gold Week once again. This is our eighth year of doing this. We've raised over $11,000 as a district for child care, it's our awareness. So in partnership with South Shore Action for Hope, we're asking our school community to fill each gold booth located in the schools and to help benefit pediatric cancer research. I'm really excited about that. And we'll celebrate on October, September 26th, this Friday, by wearing gold across the district. One thing that I put down on my, on my superintendent report with special recognition, I didn't want to give it away. You may have seen a post this afternoon from our district accounts. I'm just pleased to share some exciting news. In celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus is recognizing outstanding, outstanding Latino leaders across the Commonwealth who exemplify service, leadership and excellence in their communities. Proud to announce to all of you that our very own school committee chair, Mr. Luis Pizano, has been selected as one of this year's honorees. And Mr. Pizano will be recognized at the State House, I believe, this Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. So congratulations, Mr. Pizano, well-deserved honor. And then just lastly, we have a school committee retreat on Saturday, October 4th. If there's anything specific that you would like on that agenda, just let me know or Mr. Pizano know and we'll be happy to try to make that happen. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you for that, thank you for the recognition. That surprises anybody else.
Adam's in trouble.
All right, next, who are we? All right.
I just have a question. Just in regards to the lottery-based system. So it's, what I'm hearing, it's, it's kind of blended because there are criteria that's.
So there's a lot, so a lottery system, so essentially, I'm going to use ping pong balls, right? Let's, like, let's say we have a lottery of ping pong balls. Each student who applies essentially starts with three ping pong balls, right? One could be taken away for two, you could, one could be taken away, or two could be taken away potentially for a particular reason. We have to look, and we're going to get into this when the, when the, when South High School comes for their presentation as well because Mr. Duffy will also be here. But we're looking at a 270-day window, which is essentially seventh grade and half of eighth grade for two things. Chronic absenteeism and significant, not just general discipline, but significant discipline infractions. We're talking about significant. So we will be, that will be factored into any applicant. So if you sort of exceed the threshold within that 270-day window for either chronic absenteeism, which is unexcused, or serious discipline infractions, then you may lose one or two of the tennis ball, the ping pong balls. So that would determine how many sort of times your name would be within the database or the electronic lottery system that we'll be using. We're also looking to have a system in place that will be standardized, that we could have it generated based on student ID or whatever. So that's, that's.
Is it generated based on student, I hear the last.
ID. So, so I'm assuming, you know, you, you register within the time period, your student ID goes in. Could be, your name could be in there three times and it would generate it. And it's, all right, your name came up. And then we go through the process until we fill the positions. So we'll get into that in greater detail when, I think it's the next meeting.
So it's, all right, in terms of what the process is, the.
The details, yeah.
Criteria.
Yes, those are the only criteria.
Those are the only.
It's the only ones we can consider.
So I guess my next question is, I mean, the previous criteria was quasi-merit-based.
Yes, it's gone.
So then my question is, if it's now broader, will there be, will there be, will you build in like supports?
I think certainly, I think, we'll have to see how that works, but there may be the need to provide additional supports. I think when you look at, and I can't speak to this, and we, we do look at the number of students that are in our programs in comparison, like students with disabilities in comparison to the aggregate of the school. And I, I think we've done a good job of, of seeing active participation in many of our programs. This will, being a lottery, we're not, we don't know what will come of particular programs. And we may need to prioritize supports in certain programs depending on.
I would just add that it's one of the benefits of being a comprehensive high school is that the supports are already in the building. So it's, it's not, it's unique to comprehensive high schools to have, you know, substantially separate programming, counselors, things like that, whereas a lot of the other vocational high schools may not have as much.
But merit, to your point about merit, is completely off the table, not a part of it anymore.
Anybody else? All right. Now, now we'll move on to committee reports. Do you have any reports from committee members? Ms. Jackson?
I had two committee meetings, many meetings since the last time. One was the diversity committee. And we had a great conversation. We talked about, about the land acknowledgement plaques for the schools. We talked about what our priorities would be going forward for the next year and how we were going to break that down. I think we talked about focusing on committees, but I think we were also talking about maybe focusing on one or two tasks specifically. And also, membership was another big thing. So we tried to talk about some creative solutions about how to address membership and how to try and get more people to participate, including maybe trying to set some times when we could go places like maybe Algonquin Heights so that we could meet people where they're at instead of trying to just recruit from within the schools when people can't always attend different things. So more to look forward to with that. And although I'm not going to mention a lot about this, I also wanted to mention, because it was mentioned on the town side, that the school should be talking about safety, that I am on the safety committee and we do actually talk about that. It's just not something that you want to have large conversations about at the school committee meetings. So we are having those active conversations and have been for quite a few years. And I thought it was, since it was a big conversation at one of the town meetings, it was worth putting people's mind at ease that we are on top of that.
Yeah, I guess just given the fact that there are several town members that are also part of those conversations as well, just so that, you know, people are aware that we are collaborative in that effort as it relates to safety of our, our students and, and families.
All right. Chris, we may piggyback on that. Yes, it's, it is a collaborative, it's a town committee. We have a lot of town leaders from police, fire, emergency operations on that. Related to this, as you know, part of our communications, one of my goals regarding communications and outreach, I sent out a survey, about 800 respondents, family respondents. And the majority, I say the top priority was to learn more about safety and security. And we talked about that at the safety committee, looking at building a website of, we can provide general information. But also doing a forum, a virtual forum perhaps, where we can invite people from our committee to talk about some of the things we do in general terms, not getting into the specifics, but to sort of share information regarding what are the things we do around preparedness, responsiveness, recovery, mental health supports, protocol planning and that sort of thing, alerts and that sort of thing. So while we've done those several times, it's definitely something that continues to be understandably a topic that people want to hear more about. So we'll continue to do that.
No, I just want to say, I'm glad that there's interest in it in terms of the town. And it really goes hand in hand with this, with some of the initiatives that we talked about just regarding making sure that this is more public, that people have an understanding, so.
Any other committee objects?
We actually had a policy subcommittee meeting. Very intimidated being in there with Dr. Cam and Dr. Rogers. I made it through, it was my first one. But, you know, there was some, there were some things that we had a table, I think, on one of the policies. And I'll actually, Dr. Rogers, if you wanted to bring that up, why, it was the policy where we met with Carolyn Raines.
Sure. So there's been a change in Mass General Law with regard to medication delegation and who can delegate certain medications, which has put a lot of, I think, pressure on some of our coaches and staff to delegate, to have parents delegate on trips and things like that. So field trips and during the school day, it didn't seem like Carolyn was worried about it. But athletic events, field trips, things like that. So we had a really good conversation. A lot of it is really going to rely on a case-by-case basis. And again, we, we don't want to pit one staff member against another. If there's, you know, a hockey coach that says, yes, I'm willing, and then a soccer coach that says, no, I'm not. So it's complicated to kind of put guardrails on it. Because, you know, people have different comfort levels. Like if the hockey coach happens to be a firefighter, that might not be an issue. But, so we had a really good conversation about some, what that can potentially lead to. And a lot of more medications are being made into nasal administration. So that's just making it more common for, for more common administrations. So we have several diabetics, several kids with seizures, sores and things like that. So that was sort of the crux of our conversation, so.
I think it's important, you know, when discussing that, the consistency that you, you need to portray. Because if you have one coach who's okay opting in to administer a medication and then another coach who does not want to, and then you have two children who have the same, you know, need.
Yeah.
You can create without, you know, having enough conversation and getting it out there like this. You can create a sense of, hey, well, this student has the same exact thing as my child. And they can have it administered by their coach. So I think we got to work through it because, you know, the, the basis of why we're looking at the policies because if there's a need for a kid to have that medication, I mean, you, you gotta.
When you consistency.
Yeah, you gotta look at it. And, but policies change and also, as you said, the way medication is administered has changed greatly. I mean, in some forms of nasal spray that years ago, you couldn't even fathom that being an option. But, you know, I, I know parents, they monitor, you know, there's devices that you monitor your child and you want to make sure that they're always going to be taken care of. So we, I think it was a thoughtful conversation. And then the, I had the paperwork, with the other policy we discussed.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to run it by Dr. Blaisdell, but a lot of the other three policies we looked at had to do with raffles and whether or not.
Oh.
And that, and raffles not being allowed for fundraising and things like that.
Taxes and permits and all that stuff.
Yeah, that was one of the policy of usage. We talked about possibly, you know, not-for-profit groups and how they use our facilities, right? And we're going to explore that because I think there's a way to, you know, as a committee to understand that a lot of these groups, they're our same kids who are our students, right? And if, if we can have fields that have availability or usage that can come with some type of understanding of, hey, you gotta pay this, but you can offset it because the criteria is you're a non-for-profit made up of Plymouth kids. It, it might be worth looking at because, you know, it's, it's part of the whole collaborative that we just talked about when we're adding parking spaces, right? You know, we're, we're helping out towns and that nature, the downtown. I want to help out youth groups if we can offset some costs.
That's a good goal. All right, if not, we've got updates from Mr. Morgan for master, master planning and building committee.
Okay, I don't have any updates on master planning. We did have a building committee meeting, received updates on the. meeting. Received updates on the CPC projects, which are the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless. Those, that building's coming along. And then, Center of the Arts is going to add a renovation project. I think that's in the beginning stages. We received updates from DPW, the administrative building, they're, they're working on that, the new one. And Memorial Hall is being evaluated. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there. So, and a contractor's been chosen for the police department HVAC system. We're talking about HVAC earlier. So that's been chosen. And for the fire departments, Station Five, they're doing punch list items. Station Two is all done except for the man doors, which are on order. And Station Four, they're waiting for a vote on town meeting as to how they go forward with that. So that's all I have.
All right. Next up, Ms. Choffey for appointments, leaves of absence, and resignations.
Yes, good evening. We did accept five resignations. We processed six classified appointments, and then we did approve one parental leave and two medical leaves.
Ms. Jackson? Do you have any? Oh, you have no retirement, so we, no retirement, so I was skipping ahead.
Are you telling us something?
Nope. All right. Unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business anyone wants to resurrect? All right, any new business? I'd like to put it for future agendas. All right, Cruz Law here. He said we have a consent agenda. Any items anyone would like pulled off? It's just some homeschooling plan and count available warrants and some disposable, disposal of equipment. All right, if not, take a motion for a consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we have a second. Ms. Jackson, seconds. All right. We shall vote. All right, votes are coming in. That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right, with that, we have completed our agenda, so I will call this, end the meeting at nine eighteen PM.